All right. It is seven P M. Good evening, everyone. This is the town of Dartmouth. Planning Board Scheduled Meeting of September eighth, two thousand and twenty five. Once again, the Planning Board voted in a public meeting to continue meeting virtually in accordance with the Governor's two thousand and twenty five extension of the virtual slash hybrid open meeting option through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty seven. This is a public meeting. It will be held remotely through the Zoom application. It will be accessible for live interaction by the public using the Zoom meeting scheduled and noted on the agenda and on the website. At this point in time, we'll go ahead and begin the meeting with an open roll call. Margaret Sweet.
Here.
Lori Miller.
Here.
Kevin Estes.
Here.
Hilio Rosa.
Here.
Nick Cyclepatis.
Here.
Once again, good evening. At this point in time, based on the agenda, a continued public hearing, we're going to need a motion to open the public hearing. And Dan, do you want to start with that? Or you want to wait for the motion?
Yeah, do the motion first, and then I can.
Do we need a motion, or is it still open?
We have to make a motion to go into the public hearing portion.
Okay, a second.
All right, so we have a motion made by Kevin Estes and seconded by Lori Miller to enter the public hearing. Lori Miller?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Lori Miller?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Hilio Rosa?
Yes.
Nick Cyclepatis, yes. That brings us to number one, Application for Planning Board Special Permit, PSP dash twenty five dash two, and I'll let Dan bring us up to speed.
Yeah, so I received a letter from the applicants engineer requesting a continuance. This is due to still needing a little bit of information that was requested by the Department of Public Works for sewer, the existing sewer information onto Route six. They're in the process of getting that last bit, so I expect plans any day now. But we did need to continue, so I can read that letter into into the record. Your permission, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
So let's see, addressed to Chairman Cyclepatis. We respectfully, we respectfully request a continuance from our scheduled meeting with the Planning Board on September eighth, two thousand and twenty five, to the next meeting on September twenty second, twenty twenty five. This will allow us the time to locate additional utility structures and state road per D P W's requests. Should you have any questions regarding this request, please do not hesitate to call the office. They list the number and the email. And this is signed sincerely for Zenith Consulting Engineers LLC, Jamie Bissonette, P E, Manager, Senior Engineer. Like I mentioned, it seems like they were very close, and I think this is a a valid request for an extension.
Thank you, Dan. Any questions from the board members? If not, based on the validity of it and Dan's support, do we have a motion perhaps to continue to the requested September twenty second meeting?
Motion to continue.
Motion made by, I'll go with Margaret Sweet, and I believe seconded by Hilio, correct?
Second.
Motion made by Margaret Sweet and seconded by Hilio Rosa. Margaret Sweet?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, if we could just, if we just make sure on that continuance, it's till seven o'clock on the twenty second. Just to add that to the motion.
So the motion being made is that the continuance is until September twenty second, two thousand and twenty five, seven P M. Motion made by Margaret Sweet and seconded by Hilio Rosa. Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Hilio Rosa?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Lori Miller?
Yes.
Nick Cyclepatis, yes. At this point in time, we will need a, I believe we need a motion to return to the scheduled Planning Board meeting, correct?
Sure, we can do it that way. The motion was just to continue the meeting, correct? Not to return to regular meeting?
I believe we opened the public hearing.
Right.
No, I mean, the motion you just did was just to continue the meeting, not to return to.
Correct.
Continue the Planning Board meeting scheduled for September eighth.
Yep.
So moved that we continue, that we reopen our regular meeting.
Second?
Oh, second.
Motion made by Lori Miller, seconded by Hilio Rosa to resume the normal Planning Board meeting of September eighth. Lori Miller?
Yes.
Hilio Rosa?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Nick Cyclepatis, yes. Which brings us back to our scheduled meeting under Administrative Items Agenda, well, item number one, under Administrative Approval Not Required, P N R dash twenty five dash four. I'll let Dan chime in on that.
Sure, this is an approval not required plan filed under Portal Application, P N R twenty five dash four. This is for Assessor's Map one eighteen Lot seven, also known as twenty five School Street. They are looking to reconfigure this lot into two buildable lots. This lot is located in a general resident zoning district. They had a plan prepared by A V T Associates. This A and R would be eligible for endorsement under the regulation, and that allows for every lot to be created as frontage of the distance required by the zoning by law on a public street or a street the town clerk certifies is maintained and used as a public street. Both lots have the minimum frontage required, which is a hundred feet. So this law would be eligible for the board to endorse this plan.
Board members, any questions or comments?
I have just a kind of a quick question, just for my own clarification. They have a pool in the back. With the separate, with the separation of the two lots now, whose jurisdiction would it be if they have to fence in that lot? Does that fall in the Building Department or somebody else?
Correct, that's why. So we're, all we're saying is a lot has the minimum frontage required. We have them put a note underneath the signature block that says the above endorsement is not a determination to conformance with zoning regulations. So if there are any other zoning issues with setbacks, we are not making any kinds of termination in regards to those things.
Fair. Thank you.
A great question, Hilio. Anybody else? If not, we can entertain a motion based on the fact that it's an A and R?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by Hilio Rosa, seconded by Lori Miller. Hilio Rosa?
Yes.
Lori Miller?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Nick Cyclepatis, yes. This brings us to Agenda Item number two, which is a street determination, PSD dash twenty five dash one. We've seen this before, Stone Ledge Road. There was a lot A B issue in the past. And Dan can bring us up to speed along with D P W, and I haven't looked to see who else is here to speak on behalf of the proposer and or in support of. So Dan, do you want to get us started?
Mr. Chairman, as I had mentioned before, I'm going to recuse myself from this.
Sorry about that.
This was done before I was part of the board. Ross is very familiar with it, so he is here to.
I'm staring at the note that says Dan will recuse himself. I'm sorry about that.
No problem.
Okay, Ross, if you want to just jump in?
Sure, yeah, no problem. So as you remember, this was an A and R plan that was approved at the April seventh, two thousand and twenty five Planning Board meeting that divided map one twenty three Lot two sixty six into two lots. One of the lots was deemed to be non-buildable due to lack of frontage until a street determination was approved by the Planning Board to provide frontage. It is within the general residence zoning district. The proposed extension is approximately a hundred and twenty six feet long and is within an existing right of way. The plans were reviewed by the D P W with the engineer multiple rounds. The remaining comments at this time are only on the stormwater report and not the plans and can be addressed in the D P W's stormwater permit application. And we received two notes on the online portal that I will read in. One from Tim Barber at the D P W that reads, due to the road extension extending from a public road that is maintained by the D P W, including snow removal, D P W recommends maintaining the existing width of the paved road throughout the extension. D P W also recommends that it be noted on the plan that this road extension will remain private until the extension is petitioned for acceptance and accepted by town meeting. And then we received one from Randy Bassett, the Building Commissioner, that reads, road must be improved slash accepted prior to issuance of building permit, which is very similar to what the A and R note said. So I have a couple of other things, but at this point, I'll turn it over to the engineer or representative from the project if they have anything to add.
Hello, John Connell from SciTech Engineering, just representing the Verissimos on the project. Yeah, that's a good summary of what we had submitted and what has been approved by the D P W. The stormwater is, you're correct, that there was a couple of notes I think they wanted, which we'll make during the stormwater permit application. Also, we had in lieu of what we planned on a deed restriction instead of, there's no homeowners association. That was another question that had arisen in that we would propose a deed restriction that the owner of the new lot would maintain the infrastructure, i.e. the roadway extension and the drainage improvements. The other question that we would ask the board, now, this is, this is, I think it's the third iteration of a plan that was originally submitted. This has a extension of the existing Stone Ledge Road at twenty nine feet wide. And and it's it's a bit more intrusive than the original plan had that was submitted as far as the drainage detention basin. This wipes out a lot more vegetation. And again, it's more intrusive into the neighborhood than the original plan. I, Ross, I don't know if you recall the original plan that had, I believe it was a twenty foot paved extension and a much smaller sediment basin, riprap sediment basin that maintained the wooded areas down closer to where the street would go through. And I was curious, because I haven't asked the board their thoughts on on that, I would call it a more limited or more measured approach to, you know, with the with the narrower roadway width and and less intrusive drainage improvements.
Yeah, I mean, I would leave that up to the board if the board wanted to see that plan.
Yeah.
That's up to the board.
Okay, okay. So yeah, that was, yeah, thank you for summarizing that. And you know, with with that, if the board has any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Anyone have any questions at this point in time?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, how wide now is this road going to be, the extension?
The roadway, the existing paved surface is twenty nine feet, and per D P W's request, we maintain that twenty nine feet under the, under the current plan that's been approved by D P W.
So it will, it will be the same width?
Correct.
And the reason, the reason why that was requested, per Tim's note, was in case, if this inevitably gets accepted by town meeting, if there, if it was this wide and then got, you know, reduced down, a snowplow may end up damaging, you know, people's property.
Well, I think when they came before, as in April, there was a question about the road. Am I right, Ross?
Yep, yeah, that absolutely came up, yep.
That came up, and we decided they were going to do it one way, or they would have to build the road. So I guess they're building the road. Right?
Yeah, yeah, it was pending a street determination plan, which is, yeah.
Okay.
I just, I want to share something to John and obviously Joe as well. It's just from a Planning Board perspective, I, I just want to come clean with both of you guys. It's one thing for us to discuss grade width and material in a planning concept as a planning board. It's another thing to ask a Planning Board member of my capacity. I'll limit it to myself to rebut and or question D P W's work. So for me to make a comment about the narrower road or go back six months objectively and fairly to the town and to both, both of you proposers, I feel like I'd have to have a conversation with D P W and understand more than I understand now. My point is, I think it's, it's exercising caution when another board, in this case, D P W, provides something to us. When and where do we draw the line of questioning it? So as much as I understand your request to look or understand if narrow road, if a narrow road's an option, I also understand that this is what D P W is looking for. So for me, it would be a matter of, I would have to go back and ask objective questions to give you an objective answer. But when I have plans in front of me from D P W, I do respect them to the highest degree. So that's my comment as it relates to this plan.
I understand. Thank you.
Yeah, and Mr. Chair, if I could?
Yeah.
I think, you know, when you're looking from my perspective, when you're looking at pros and cons of potentially reducing the width, you know, when you talk about impact on vegetation in the overall site, I would have a difficult time, given the narrowing of a, of a road at the end, I would have a difficult time rebutting D P W on this one. I can't imagine that a narrower road or a condition where the road narrows is a value add over reducing it for, you know, protecting some vegetation, which I respect a lot, but I couldn't endorse that over D P, over D P W.
I'll just make one comment that I have seen this done before, and I, I've never liked it. So if you're going to extend the road, then you have to extend the road to the width of the public road. It has to match.
Okay.
I think if, I think if the road had, you know, maybe a turn in ninety degrees, or, you know, if there was an extension in that way where there was a clear delineation of, of a difference in the road, we, I think I could entertain a different discussion, but where it's just a straight continuation, I, I I don't see the logic. My opinion.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I have the same opinion. I've seen where these roads are wide and go narrow, and they're driving on the the side of the road, destroying the grass and everything. It's just too dangerous. It's either one, one size or the whole width. It's, it makes no sense to cut it smaller. But I also have another question. Can I continue?
Of course.
The building inspector's comment, road must be improved slash accepted prior to issuance of a building permit. Roads don't have to be accepted in order to get a building permit, so I'm not, I'm not sure why he's doing that. Ross, do you have any answer?
Yeah, I think, I mean, this is, this is my interpretation, but I, I think he meant improved and accepted by the Planning Board, like the, this street determination. That's how I, that's how I took it when I first saw. I could be mistaken. I can, I can certainly clarify with him.
Yeah, be, now we've got two interpretations of this. I'm reading it as the road, it has to be approved and accepted. Now, accepted, does that mean town meeting as an accepted road, or does it just mean us?
Okay, I can, I can follow, I can follow up with him just to make sure.
Okay, thank you.
Absolutely.
I thought the same thing, Lori. I wasn't sure either how it was meant.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to speak. This is Kevin Estes.
Of course.
I know for a fact that there's there's a lot of runoff that comes from the top of the lower section of Stone Ledge directly down that road and, and right down into Buzzard's Bay and onto the beach. Causes a lot of erosion of the dunes from the beach and both Anthony and Stone Ledge beaches. And connecting the upper portion to the lower portion is absolutely going to to, to increase the amount of runoff and destruction of property as well as beach and dune and runoff of, of water that is contaminated into the bay. And I, I won't vote for anything that has anything to do with connecting these two.
What about the stormwater? Wouldn't, wouldn't they make exceptions for that? Wouldn't they work that into the stormwater that they need? You know, that this is going to need? Wouldn't the D P W and stuff, you know? Wouldn't they take that into consideration? Because I've been down that street when it's rained, so I agree, but wouldn't they take that into consideration? I thought they would.
So you think that the, the media, I mean, I'd like to talk to somebody and have them show me how the mitigation is going to offset the amount of rainwater that comes from Upper Stone Ledge down that path that, that's right now at least absorbed into ground and won't add to, to the already exhaustive runoff that we have on Lower Stone Ledge.
You may be right. I just, I'm assuming, and I don't like to assume because you know what that means, but I was just, now with the new stormwater regulations and all, I just thought that, you know, they would make recommendations so that they could maybe fix that.
I'd like to, I'd like to, I'd like to have, have.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Kevin, in all fairness to you and Margaret, I'm with you. I really, I really look at this with a broad-based assumption that these, for lack of a better description, these controls were in place based on the plan. Like, I would have thought that that was accounted for. So based on your, you know, your discontent with this plan and the fact that Margaret and I are not clear, perhaps we could ask someone at D P W to come to us in the meeting, or one of us can take the responsibility to go to D P W. I'm happy to do so, but this is not the first or the last time that we're going to see this. We, as a board, need to understand how much of such control is in this plan and subsequent plans or not, or else we'll always have this question. Dan, Dan or Ross, do you have any input as to Kevin's concern and how much of it would be mitigated by D P W's efforts like we see here or not?
Well, I know, I know if they ever wanted to connect the two, they, one, they'd definitely have to do another street determination with the Planning Board, and two, they'd have to do another, likely another stormwater permit with the D P W, and the whole point of that is to make sure that it is not worse than before. It has to be the same or better in terms of, in terms of drainage. So, and I know with this one, the stormwater report that they submitted and the stormwater permit that they'll ultimately have to file with the D P W is going to ensure that that pond system at the end of this proposed extension would reduce the likelihood that the stormwater would be worse than, than before. That's my, you know, my, my knowledge on the, on the stormwater aspect, but that much I know.
I'm just going to take a moment to call on Joe and John. Do either one of you have comments specific to this concern?
John Connell, again, thank you, SciTech Engineering. Yeah, the, the D P W asks, it's by way of their bylaws and their requirements, they ask for stormwater mitigation, and it's case by case. In this case, they did factor in what was heading downstream to the extension and asked us to reduce those peak rates of runoff. And that's what that basin is designed to do. And then also, you know, treat and, and remove some of the T S S, the total suspended solids that would be generated by the, the improvements. So, you know, we met all of the D P W requirements, everything they asked of us for the stormwater and, and the infrastructure out there. So yeah, I mean, the ultimate question that's being asked is whether that's sufficient, and the D P W, you know, in this case, says yes. They said that, you know, by reducing the peak rates, we've accomplished the intent of the regulations.
Mr. Chairman, like, if we take a, a vote for passage or, or not passing this today, I think it's pretty clear what my vote would be. I would I would be in favor of a postponement to get a stronger opinion from D P W and, and give the, some more time to lay concerns of the runoff there. Because it's, it's extreme, and there's a, a group of citizens that live along the Lower Stone Ledge section that, that have already expressed concern and an interest in making sure that this does not happen.
I understood that. I appreciate your perspective, Kev. My question is for, well, before I share this, does anybody else want to make a comment about the plan or ask Joe or Joe, Joe or John a question?
Mr. Chair, if I can, I think the due diligence required of this particular topic with the runoff and the drainage requires us to have a pointed question asked to D P W and get the clarification that the calcs, the design meet the required regulations regarding this runoff. I understand the concern. We have comments from D P W that specifically addresses the width. I think in order to, for us to be completely thorough and transparent, we should have D P W specifically weigh in on this runoff issue. I don't think this board is, again, with all due respect to every member of this board, is adequately trained to discuss runoff calculations, and we would rely on the expertise of D P W to clarify and give confidence to this board that this will be okay.
Much appreciated, Hilio. Anyone else at this moment? And if not, I'd like to just share a perspective with John and Joe, because I think we've heard both sides of this early on with the reduction in the width. We went on as a board to share with you that we have confidence in D P W's plans, and we do not like to dissect them because we're not qualified. And now we're in a position where we're discussing D P W's plans, and we have concerns. Basically, the coin flipped over the same subject, the same proposal. So my question to Joe and John is, understanding the sentiment of the board and understanding what, what is likely in your favor. You feel confident about what you're proposing, but yet we have board members with a profound amount of curiosity as to a few of the other items that they've discussed. And I'm not sure if this is fair or not from a procedural perspective, but would you like us to vote on this tonight, or would we like to agree to postpone this for one or two meetings so that the board members that have uncertainty and or questions can do their due diligence and plan on voting on this at the next meeting?
I'm sorry, Joe, would you care to comment on that?
Hi, yes, this is Joe Verissimo, and I don't mind waiting for another meeting. It's fine. I was under the impression since June second, which is when we submitted it to the D P W, and we waited this long is because we're, we're doing everything that the D P W, in specific, Paul DuWright, was looking for, to meet everything that they wanted. That's why it took us this long to get here. Furthermore, whichever way it goes, it's totally fine. I'm here. I don't really care about the twenty nine foot width, the twenty foot width. We're doing that because less width, less runoff. But we're okay with the twenty nine foot width. We were trying, where the first plan was to have less vegetation taken out. It's more appealing. And as far as the neighbors that are there, I probably know three quarters of them, friends with all of them. I know what it is to extend the road because I'm the one who extended the hundred-foot road that if you go from the bottom to the top to get those last two houses, which are nice people, still friends of mine, Terry and Clem Lamar, Dr. Kelly and the, and the husband. I'm the one who did those houses. I did six of the houses down on that street. Never had any issues. I've talked to some of the neighbors, the ones that I know. They actually loved our first plan versus the second one, but we, at this point, to us, it doesn't matter. If it's twenty nine feet, it's fine. If you need to ask more questions to, whether it's Paul or Tim, go right ahead. We're in no hurry. The only one thing that I would like to know, hopefully in the next meeting, is in which way it's going, because right now, I'm pretty sure that, because everybody knows about everybody's business. Because right now, uh, I'm, I'm pretty sure that, cause everybody knows about everybody's business, especially when it's a small town. I do have this under contract with a very reputable, nice contractor in town. I don't wanna build anymore, so we're selling is the property. I've done that in the past and I'll continue to do so. Uh, as of now, the new plan, which is the one that shows a lot more, you know, with the swales and with the riprap and all of the drainage and stuff, he seems to be okay with it. And hopefully it goes through for me and for the neighborhood. If it's something that it doesn't, I'm still not gonna build on it. I do have two other contractors that are also town of Dartmouth residents that are interested in it. But they're not interested to doing what we have under agreement. And, and I'm not gonna say his name because I don't think it's right to say it. Uh, but the person that's gonna do it now is for something that's into the million three to a million six, when it's all said and done. The other two gentlemen, look at it a little differently. They're looking at for more for rental purposes. And for rental purposes, as you can tell, it is a hundred and fifty-eight foot, a frontage lot. Actually, it's a little bit more than that, cause you got a little angle. And it does have over twenty thousand square feet. So it is general residence, a duplex lot. Would we like to go there? Uh, one million percent no. I am friends with the neighbors that are direct abutters to this property. And I love them. They've been friends for, for, since nineteen ninety-nine when I did that addition. So that's the only thing that I can tell you guys. Take your time, ask all the questions. Come up with whatever it is. And I'm hoping that the guy that I'm selling it to, it, you know, does not back down and goes along with it. Because if it doesn't, then it's whoever gives me whatever it is that I'm asking for and I let it go and and, and I, and I probably, I'm not even sure. Maybe I sell it with an approved plan. Maybe I go ahead and do the road. In this case, I would be responsible to do that road because that's one of the conditions. So who I have it under a contract with is for me to finish that and to do that road. So whatever you guys decide, and if he still goes along with it, that he has no opposition to it, then I'm the one who's gonna go ahead and do the road. If it doesn't, then I'll probably, I don't know what I'm gonna do yet, but we'll figure it out.
Joe, thank you. And I think that is, um, you know, I think it's very respectful to share that much information about your project. And, uh, equally in respect of you, John, and just the concept and my board members. I, I hate to proceed and vote on something when we already got the sentiment of the board. Why not put it off for fourteen days, come back with all questions answered, each board member can be prepared to vote?
Can I say something, please?
Absolutely, Lori.
I mean, I'm, I, I'll go along with putting it off for fourteen days. I don't have a problem with that. But if Tim Barber or anyone on the DPW had a problem with this prom, project, they would have said so in their letter. They have not said so in their letter, which leads me to believe that they have looked at all of their problems. They've looked at the runoff and they've just, and have come up with a proposal that, um, they have agreed with, that's on this plan. So I don't have a problem with the plan as stated. You know, the width of the road is to remain the same as the, um, the road that's there. I see no comments from DPW that they have a problem with anything else on this plan. Um, I, I'm not comfortable questioning their, their opinion.
Excuse me, Ms. Miller, can I say something?
Sure, Joe, go ahead.
Okay, so actually before the meeting last, uh, Tuesday, we needed to have the plan by Wednesday. So I, I actually went and talked to Paul, uh, I'm sorry, to Tim Barber himself. And I asked him, was there anything else? Was there anything else that he wanted, that he needed? And in fact, I ended up telling him, are you going to, uh, write something, which I'm, I'm kind of a little bit surprised, uh, that you're okay and it satisfies what you wanted? And he says, absolutely. Those what, that's exactly what he told me. So I'm not sure if that's the procedure. Does he write something saying it's okay? Or does he just not comment and that, that suffices what they want? I'm not sure. I just thought that maybe he would have written something, but according to Tim Barber last Tuesday, and, uh, Dan actually knows because I was back and forth to try to figure out, you know, do I need anything? Again, we were in no hurry. We started with this in June and we made sure that it went to them, came back to us. It takes a little longer because I do understand they're understaffed. And sometimes, you know, whether it's Paul or, or if it's Tim or whatever, they're out on job sites, they're doing things. So sometimes it takes a little longer than what we thought like, but it, we just wait sometimes a little bit more. Whether it's a week, week and a half or so. But according to both of them, we, we've done it. We've gone back and forth with them numerous times. I would say at least three to four times. I actually sat down with Paul Duarte a couple of times. So, but again, if you guys are not comfortable in voting, go right ahead and wait, do whatever it is. But again, according to them, we're doing, which is exactly what they want. And I think we actually probably went a little bit over just to make sure that we wouldn't have any issues. And again, I don't have any issues with any of the neighbors. In fact, I wish that they had seen, I know it's not a public meeting, but if they had seen both plans, and again, not about the width. The width, we don't care. If it's twenty-nine feet, if it's thirty, if it's twenty, it doesn't matter. Whatever you guys are comfortable with is fine. We did that. It was only to address the, the runoff. And we did speak with the, uh, fire chief. And he also told me, he said, it's only for a house, possibly the one across the sweep, but nobody knows what they're doing with that. So you can go up to twenty. That's the only reason. Other than that, it does, at this point, Nick, honestly, it's whatever you guys are comfortable with.
Joe, I, I appreciate that. I, I think my, my perspective is very neutral. I see a few things going on. I see the sentiment of some of my board members and they have some questions that they want answered. I understand Lori's perspective and the last, and the lack of a deterrent letter from Tim or Paul creating concern for us. And then I see a proposer who knows that he did everything he could do. I like to close gaps a- and bring people together, not divide people. If you're not pressed and you can give it two weeks, it's gonna allow the board members that have a few more questions to get their questions answered. And we can plan to vote on this on the next meeting, uh, as a rule, you know, plan to vote on it, period B N. I just don't see anything real good coming out of voting on it today. If we know the sentiment as a result of remaining questions, and I understand your perspective and I respect it. But at the same time, I'm, I'm trying to create less obstacles and perhaps create progress. And I think these two weeks, although unfair to you from the perspective you came prepared, fair to the board members that they have a few questions. I, I understand you could quickly come back to me and say, but Nick, this is from your town. This is from DPW. This is here to vote on. I'm just trying to bridge the gap between maybe a vote today that doesn't go so well and maybe answering a few questions and having a better vote in two weeks.
Could we have a list?
What's that, Lori?
Do we have a list of what the members want to ask DPW?
I think Kevin spelled it out quite well. How much, how much does the runoff calculations mitigate all of his other beach and eroding and, and vegetation altering concerns below grade, further down? So, uh, if we need to put it in writing, we can ask Kevin to repeat it. But I, I think ultimately Kevin's question and something that Margaret supported, their curiosity and wanted to know more of. And in front of John and in front of Joe, before this meeting is over, when we're in our session, I think we need to very concretely and, and specifically come up with a few questions above and beyond DPW's works, like we see before us. And the mitigating questions that we have, and we need to understand what their answer is so that we don't put other proposers in the same position over the same question in the future. Unfortunately, the burden of this question falls on Joe and John. But as a town and as a board and doing better, you know, we need to understand that as a board. Kevin, would you feel better if your concerns were outlined?
Uh, well, I plan on getting my concerns addressed one way or another.
Right.
Whether I, I outline them or whether I, I go up and say, hey, show me.
Sure. Well, in all fairness to this project, the proposers and those that will come before us in the future, this is a conversation that we board members need to have later tonight and in follow-up meetings and, and resolve the question that we have as it relates to further mitigation outside of stormwater controls. And I think that's just gonna make us a better board for understanding that.
And Mr. Chair.
And if I.
Yes, Helio, go ahead.
Mr. J.
Sorry.
Helio, go ahead.
Sorry, I, I just wanna, you know, publicly say, you know, my concern is not in any way, shape or form to be obstructionist. It's the opposite. It's, it's in the, the, the thoroughness and the preparedness of these, of the questions. Um, and Mr. Verissimo and, and, and Mr. Uh, Connell, I have no doubt on your integrity that you've done everything that, um, is required of the project. It's a lot easier, I think, for this board and us looking out for the interests of the town to make sure that all the Ts are crossed and the Is dotted, in that we don't have any remaining doubts. So that, because the opposite of, um, having any doubts in an approval that then would yield something unfavorable, which I am not suggesting is the case on this plan, has more hardships for the town down the road. So from my perspective, is in any way, shape or form, um, trying to be obstructionist, it's at being as thorough as we can in looking out for the best interests of the town as it's set up for this project and others in the future. So if we can get those simple questions resolved from my standpoint, and, uh, they meet to the, to our satisfaction, that they comply with all the DPW's runoff regulations, from my perspective, we move forward.
I appreciate the clarity, um, of your position, Helio. Thank you so much. Kevin, I think you were about to speak, just, uh.
Yeah, I, I, I wanted to commend Joe on taking, and John on taking the time, and George on taking the time to, to do the extra work with, with DPW. Uh, and I, I guess if, if you can just put yourself in our shoes where we are not, or I am not, I'll speak for myself, a, a professional in this industry necessarily. Uh, and we got this, uh, packet on Thursday. So it, it, it was, you know, kind of a, uh, I, I appreciate the fact that you guys took a lot of time because it was a big stretch of time between the last meeting and this meeting. And, and, uh, but, you know, we, we only had a, a couple of days and, and.
Okay.
I, I agree with Helio's sentiment that we're not trying to be obstructionist. I just wanna make sure that, you know, this is a big issue for, for this, this space. It's, and it's been raised to me. And, uh, I wanna make sure that it, it's, it's gonna be okay.
Sure, I, and I appreciate that. And, and hopefully you guys also do see it from my point. I know the neighborhood. I know most of those people there. I'm friends with all of them. And I certainly would love to, to have done what I had already seen a plan for, which is beautiful, versus me going in a different direction, which I wouldn't want to. But again, it were, my brother and myself were kind of already the last couple of years, two, three years. We just don't wanna do it anymore. The thing of the building and the, the subcontractors and the thing, we just don't wanna do it anymore. So we come across this, we actually helped out the Steve McNich. You probably know, uh, Kevin, the, the one that owned One Stone Ledge. I don't know, did you know him?
Uh, I, i- if it's the person I'm thinking of, I'm familiar with him.
Yes, well, he was about to lose the house. And he had a lot of issues, whatever. We stepped in, we helped him out. He does have a house now. It was a business thing. We, but we're trying, if anything, we're trying to beautify. Also, not just you, Nick knows who I am. I've known Nick since he was twelve years old from Holly Drive and Margaret Sweet. Nobody knows me better than Margaret Sweet.
That's true. I do know Joe.
And so, but anyway, you guys take your time. And, uh, fourteen days, it's not gonna hurt me at all. It is what it is. And I'll wait, hopefully we get your answers all, you know, your questions all answered and we'll take it from there. No, no problem.
Joe, your position is much appreciated.
I, I just like, uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to clarify what my position was. My position was that Tim Barber, um, and the stormwater, I think that they know what they're doing. That, that, that was my position. I, I, the new stormwater, uh, that we have to all do, I'm sure that they use with this road. That was my position.
Got it. Anyone else? If not, at this point in time, it'd be a good time. Uh, John and Joe, thank you so much for, uh, you know, your presentation and understanding our position over this subject, um, for tonight. A motion to continue the roadway improvement plan until the September twenty-second meeting at seven P M.
Okay.
Do I have a motion from a board member?
Moved, Kevin.
Second.
Motion made by Kevin Estes, seconded by Helio Rosa to continue the street determination of PSD dash twenty-five dash one to the September twenty-second planning board meeting at seven P M. Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Helio Rosen?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Lori Miller?
Yes.
Nick Cyclepatis, yes. John and Joe, thank you very much.
All right, you appreciate it.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks.
This brings us to administrative item number three, discussion, special permits, rules and regulations, draft revisions that were in the packet. Did anybody get a chance? And before I make believe that I'm ahead of you, I begin to review them today. So is, is anybody ahead of me and or comments? Regarding draft revisions in the special permit rules and regulations.
I had one, but I have to find it. Um, it, it wasn't that I disagreed with it. It was a little iffy on how it ran. Go ahead, go on, I'll try and find it.
That's fine. If you find it, fine. And, um, for the most part, um, if not, you know, perhaps Ross, this can carry over to the next meeting, knowing that we'll all put some time into the drafts. Is that fair? Forward to be on the next agenda as well, Ross?
Yeah, yeah, I, I can put that on the next agenda. Dan, are you fine with that?
Yes. Um, also just as a bit of, uh, bookkeeping, I have also forwarded them to, um, Town Council as well. Um, I have not heard anything back yet, but they do have it as well, um, cause we will need them to do a final review before we, well, before you vote as a board to accept them as the revised draft, as the revised revisions.
Very good. Thank you.
I, I found where it was. It's three point one hundred, under three point one hundred, and it's three point one oh one. Um, Dan, you took out send copies of the plan too, and cross that off and put add. I'm not, I'm not sure it runs smoothly. It's, it's more of an English thing than anything. If, if it's everyone's fine with the way it's written, it's no big deal. It just, to me, it doesn't run smooth.
Yeah, so the way it, the way it'll look when it's all said and done will be, planning staff may add other departments via the online portal for comments and review. So some special permits, um, are set up, so it's limited to, um, and Ross can, if you can clarify anything, I'm saying that's wrong. Um, you know, the building inspector, uh, whoever. So, but there's other things that we wanna see other people on. So this just allows us to add, planning staff may add other departments via the online portal for comment review based on the type of special permit.
Okay, so when you, when you read it that way, fine. I was just reading it and saying I was getting caught up on it. But it, now that you've read it and I hear it better from someone else, no problem.
Okay, great.
Would you, would you be happier with include other departments rather than add? Include? Lori?
Yeah, whatever just makes it sound smoother. It just, to me, it got hung up.
I think include is, I think include is something that suggests it already happened. I think add requires an action, like go to the portal and add. I'm not, I'm, but I'm no English grammar major.
Okay.
Yeah, so, so, so what happens on the portal is, um, Ross or whoever is responsible for adding, that's what you're doing. You're adding names to, to, to the portal.
I'm, I'm happy with it.
Yeah, that, that's how I understood it too. Dan, um, one question on, uh, two point one, two point one oh one. You eliminated a lot of the subsections and then you, you're keeping the two, I guess call it bullets, on the Dartmouth assessor's office shall certify. And then the second one is the applicant shall provide two copies. Are you intending that that's a, an H in an I continuation? Or are you looking at a completely different subset? a an H in an I continuation? Or are you looking at a completely different subset? And I ask that because I I have the version that has all the edits to it.
Okay, yeah. Um, so you're looking at two point one oh, two point one oh one, which subsection?
Two point one, no, mate, take it back, two point one oh two.
Two point one oh two. Um, a list of all parties in interest who needs to be notified.
Right.
Yeah, so you you have sections A through G kept. And then below that, you have two other sentences? Are they intended to be another letter continuation? Are you trying to create a different paragraph?
Ross, that was just like basically below that, just an explanation, correct? Just explaining what needs to be done. There used to be an assessor's um list that had all those on there. Um, so now they're listing what's in the A through G. And then just clarify, that'll be a note of clarif- I guess, call it notification below it, um, saying that when that list comes through, it'll be from the Dartmouth Assessor's Office certifying that the Platten lot numbers correspond with the names and address shown on the list. And then the applicant shall provide two copies of self-sticking mailing address labels. So it's not a list of the parties in interest, it's kinda just um like uh, I don't know what the word I'm looking for.
The statement, it's almost like a closing sentence.
Like a statement of clarification on what we need to see. So it's not an A through G.
Yeah, that's fine. Again, it's a little hard on the version that I have because of all the red edits.
Yeah, exactly. What, we'll take, take out all the red lines and it might look a little, a little cleaner.
Yep, I get it. No problem.
Anyone else? Dan, this is more of just a discussion, correct?
Yes, yep. It was something um that Lori brought up to us. And we, and Ross and I looked into it, and it was definitely something that needed some updating, so um, we kinda dove into to getting those revisions done and hopefully get them posted and be ready for any applicant to have current information.
Nice.
Now, you've already sent this to Town Council, right, to to review?
They they have it to review. I have not received comments back yet.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, will you hypothetically, if you hear back from Town Council between now and the next meeting, will will Ross kick it out perhaps in an email for us? Or 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 keep us surprised?
Yes, it'll either be an email or in in the packet for the next meeting.
Perfect. Are we, uh, board members, are we, are we good with this subject matter for for this meeting?
Yes. Mister Chairman.
Okay. All right, so Dan and Ross, thank you for those updates, and um, we'll we'll obviously um speak on it more next meeting and with the input of council, be far ahead from where we are now. The next subject is item number four, Chapter ninety one, Waterways, Water Dependent License. I'll let Dan jump in on this for one seventy three Gulf Road.
Um, yes, Mister Chairman, this is um a notification that the Chapter ninety one program, um, they they request comments back from various departments in town um as part of their review process. Um, so this is a notification for a a proposed dock at one seventy three Gulf Road, assesses map thirty five, lot twenty three dash two. Um, the plans were were in your packet. Um, these were brought forward by Principi Company Inc. And um, it's a pretty, pretty standard dock. I don't know if everybody's had a chance to look at that. But um, in accordance um with the Mass D E P regulations, you have to be notified of this license application. Um, standard uh procedures for the planning board, acknowledge receipt of the notification, and um, pretty much a standard letter that we send that um, we included in the packet with the, as a draft um, that I believe everybody received in the packet. So it's pretty, pretty straightforward, pretty standard in these situations, but if anybody on the board has any questions or comments, um, we can address them.
I I definitely don't have any questions. I mean, it's gonna be consistent with other, with numerous other homes that have similar structures uh north of the bridge, so I mean, I think it's expected for a parcel like that to request the dock at some point. Anyone else?
I'm fine with it. It's standard.
Are we voting on this, Dan?
Yes.
Um, yes. Yeah, I would just say to to vote that we receive, um, that you receive notification and that staff will send their standard letter to um Mass D E P.
All right, so we'll entertain that motion from someone unless there are any planning board members with questions regarding this item.
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Margaret Sweet, seconded by Kevin Estes, to be supportive of Chapter ninety one Waterways Water Dependent Licensor for one seventy three Gulf Road under standard format per Dan. Uh, Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Lori Miller?
Upstank.
Helio Rosa?
Yes.
Nick Cyclopatis, yes. All right. That brings us to item number five, minutes. Perhaps a motion to acknowledge and file.
Motion?
Second.
Motion made by Kevin Estes, seconded by Helio Rosa, to acknowledge and file the minutes of the August twenty fifth meeting. Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Helio Rosa?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Lori Miller?
Yes.
Nick Cyclopatis, yes. Brings us to number six, correspondence for Fall River, Freetown and Westport. Dan, do you wanna share anything?
Um, pretty standard notifications, um, planning board, special permit and um and zoning decisions or meeting listings for City of Fall River, Town of Freetown, Town of Westport. Um, so I'd recommend to the board to acknowledge and file.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Great. Motion made to acknowledge and file correspondence by Lori Miller and seconded by Margaret Sweet. Lori Miller?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Helio Rosa?
Yes.
Nick Cyclopatis, yes. That brings us to number seven. For your information, old business, new business, I'll let Dan chime in, um, starting off with incoming Z B A uh applications. Uh, Dan, can you just get us through the section?
Yes, um, there there was a filing for a use variance um for Zero State Road. Um, it's kind of across the street almost from the eight thirteen State Road project that we're doing. Um, a few things that I noticed on that I'd like to um comment to the portal for the application. Um, one, they will need an approval not required plan, um, which might have some implication as far as lot coverage um in available area. So I would like to add that note to the portal and also um, we've had use variances in the past for these kind of projects. Um, there's also been um, we require uh a condition that they come to us for site plan review. Um, so I would like to to add that request for for a comment on the portal. I don't know if anybody else has any interest in commenting on that project? Or anything to add?
I think we're, we're absolutely in support. Um, other members, please chime in, but obviously in support of site plan review.
I'm uh, I'm trying to find it. We don't have a plan or anything, do we, Dan?
It's, yes, it's in the package.
It's gonna be a huh.
Okay, and I must have it.
Um, let me see if I can tell you what page it's on.
Without looking it up real fast, I have it here. How many apartments was that gonna be? Do you remember?
Fifty six.
Fifty six, okay.
Yes.
Cause I don't I if I make it large on my screen, I lose some of the detail, so I I'm trying to figure out how many bedrooms some of them have. I know it's listed here.
Um, I don't know if they listed the bedroom. I think they just listed fifty six apartments.
Yeah, that's what I've okay.
Um, I don't see a an actual bedroom count.
Yeah, I didn't see it on any of the the comments.
Yeah. And I don't wanna assume what the bedroom count was, but it's town water and town sewer.
Mm-huh.
And this is zer- Zero State Road, is that what you?
Ba- basically, anything that's on s- on uh any road that doesn't have an address, when they file for the applications on the portal, it comes in as zero and then whatever the street name is. So it's listed as Zero State Road because there's currently no structure on the property. But it's, it's, it's right across from eight thirteen State Road. That would have been if we had that special permit application today.
So is that, is that, Dan?
With the, with the ledges, the big ledge outcropping?
Right, right, but Dan, is that a a corner location?
No, the corner lot is not part of it.
The corner lot, it's it's next to it, though.
Yes, correct.
So it's next to it and um same owner, though, right?
I believe so. I'm not sure how they listed on the assessors' records, but I believe.
Oh, no, I'm just trying.
Property owner.
Yes.
Not proposer.
Yes, property.
Yeah, correct, I think so.
Yeah.
Okay. And and it's how many apartments there?
Uh.
Fifty six?
Fifty six, fifty six. Sorry, I keep bending over. I have to spread out in my home area.
So I mean, th- this is really just an FYI for us at this point, isn't it?
Um, yeah, it just, it it allows us to, it'll, like we talked about the portal for other things, so on the portal, it allows planning staff to comment of anything we see, so um, based on what I, what I saw that they, from a planning board perspective, these are the things that would be concerned that we need to uh make sure the applicant, the zoning board of appeals is aware of that they might need from a planning standpoint.
I think that needs to come before us because I think we need to look at the traffic pattern inside the uh the parking. So that's what you're suggesting, is that it comes before us for?
Per site plan, per site plan review, correct.
Exactly, yes.
Which would fall in line with other zoning decisions for similar use.
Correct.
Variance requests.
Why is it going to the Z B A?
Cause it's in a general business, so um residential is is not allowed by right.
How many acres?
I don't know if they have a whole. It looks like it's about eight total.
Any other questions or comments? I just wanna clarify something from my own sanity. We, we do not have a plan of the property of a proposed uh structure, do we? We just have the
Right.
Okay, as I'm looking and looking.
No, we don't have, no. It's just a plan, and it's, you know.
Well, it show, it shows where the structure would be go, where they're proposing the structure to go.
Right, it shows the structure, but it doesn't show what it architectural wise.
Um, I don't, um, I don't remember if that was part of the application. Um, I can, I can see if it's been uploaded. Um, I can email the board if there is.
So we we don't even know anything about lot coverage or anything like that. Yeah, I can't even see this. I can't read this plan.
No, zoom in, I mean, um.
Yeah, there, yeah, the lot, um, lot coverage says it's um proposed twenty seven point one percent.
Yeah, and it is about, it is about eight acres.
Between lot one and two, right? About eighty, uh, lot three. Actually, I can't see that with the.
I can't either.
All three, all three lots are about eight and a quarter.
Thank you.
As proposed, we don't have the, we won't have the official numbers unless they come in with a approval not required plan.
Well, I agree, um, you know, that's gonna be traffic, traffic, and across the street, traffic, traffic, and down the street, traffic, traffic. What are you gonna do?
Well, I'm I'm, I I'm erring on the side of optimism that this proposer put together a good project recently in town, and I I gotta believe that the project he just completed is gonna have a strong influence on what he does here, based on all the, you know, all the motions he went through, so it'll be interesting to see more, but in good faith, I I I believe we're gonna see a relatively good project.
Which project did he do before?
Eighty Cross Road, next to the Nissan dealership.
Between Target and the Nissan dealership.
Right.
That access road.
Very good project, yeah.
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 Did a good job there.
So so same applicant.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, he did a good job there, yeah.
So there's no, there's no, um.
Which, which they brought that before site plan review to the, to the planning board.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
It'd be curious, because there's no, there's no curb opening through the median in on Route six to get access to it on, you know, eastbound.
Right. Yeah, there's nothing, that'll, that, that's nothing that would be shown on for this kinda application.
No, just more of the discussion of traffic.
Right.
Well, all we can do now is i- is wait, correct? I mean, there's not much to do other than be aware of what's before us, but ultimately wait for site plan review.
Mm-huh.
Correct, in 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 after the, I don't even think they have it scheduled for a date yet, but as with the next item, you know, once we get zoning determinations, we'll um we'll, we'll order them to the, to the planning board.
Great. All right. Uh, unless anybody has any questions at this point in time, perhaps Dan can proceed to uh legal ads or decisions and.
Yeah, so the two, the two decisions um that were included in your packet today, um, one was for an administrative appeal of a building, um, the building department's um decision um, that was granted by the board um for one forty six Chase Road. And the other was for um a setback variance request that was also granted by the board on fourteen Gallion Drive. So those are both included in, in the packet to the board.
Another ADU?
Yep.
Yeah. One by one, slowly. How about the um subcommittee reports? Anybody at this point in time? If not, um, I just, Dan, I'm gonna ask you a question. Um, what, what, so really quick, quick diversion, I'll talk more about it in a minute, but I did stop in a couple of times and spend some quality time with Dan and Ross um, last week as well as today. Um, Dan, is what you were showing me today a draft from Serp Ed or or something there, you know, that that's been printed and disseminated?
That was from, um, I believe the date was twenty twenty four. Um, he's referencing, I believe, Margaret, you were on the email I received too. I don't know if you had a chance to look at it. It was for the pro- the housing projections that Serp Ed did from twenty twenty four. Did you have a chance to look at that many?
I haven't, I haven't looked at that yet.
Um, yeah, it's, so it's, it's, it's nothing that was directed at the, to the planning board. It was just something that was forwarded to me and I thought it had some interesting information.
It it did, and definitely we get together for the meeting that we're gonna discuss scheduling or confirming that that information will be valuable. One of my questions is the housing production plan that you've been talking about.
Yep.
Are those, are those results back, or is that still in process?
Um, so I don't know if you want, you wanna just skip to the planner's report and I can give a little spiel on those items?
Well, we're there, right? No, there's no subcommittee reports.
No, no subcommittee reports. Okay.
So let's, yeah, let's do it. Let's just get there then. It's your floor, and and my question was, really quick, with what you're gonna share about that, is the, the housing production plan that Serp Ed is producing, is it an update of what I saw today, or is it separate and distinct?
No, this, this is that, this will be something different. Um, so, um, the Dartmouth Housing Production Plan survey results, um, I emailed to the board, I think before the last meeting. Um, I don't know if any of the board members had a look at that. It's got some interesting information that we can use um when we meet. The next step, the the Housing Production Plan uh Committee is looking to do a meeting in October. Um, the next step would be to create some goals for what's the town would like to see for how Um, the next step would be to create some goals for what's the town would like to see for housing. Um, I mentioned that we had penciled in a meeting for September twenty ninth um to to discuss that. Um, one of the items we can have at that meeting is is to, if any of the board members have some goals that they would like. To present to the housing plan production committee. Um. That's something we could, we could vote on and decide at that meeting, which again is an item for discussion. Uh, I know a few members weren't here last meeting. Um, the Lori as the acting um chairwoman. Um, penciled in for September twenty ninth, so. Today, hopefully as a board, we can decide if we are going to do that extra meeting on the twenty ninth in person. At seven o'clock at the town hall.
We will, we'll get to that, but I think that's something we all kind of agreed on in the past, so actually let's just do it now. Does anybody have any opposition to meeting in town hall September twenty nine?
Not me.
If there's no opposition, Dan, let's plan on scheduling it.
Okay, and Ross, if you wanna just confirm with me, we have discussed that with. Um, D C T V and we should be all set to be able to make get that scheduled with them, correct?
Correct. I will confirm tomorrow. Now that I know that the board can attend, I will confirm and make sure that we're covered.
Thank you.
So that'll so that'll be a a meeting that will be advertised, well, not advertised, but posted. Um, and we will have an agenda for that. Do you want me to go on to the next item or do you want?
Unless anybody has any questions for Dan at this moment, I mean, I think you can, you know, proceed and then. When we get to the chairperson's report, uh, we'll talk a little bit about some of the stuff we went over today. So I just wanna plant a few seeds, so I'm sure we'll have some dialogue there.
Yeah, the only other item I had in there, um, I sent out also um. The red lines for the site plan review revisions. Um, again, I sent that to town council. Um, I sent a request in for town council to. The town administrator that was approved. Those revisions have been sent to town to to town council. This is obviously a little, a little longer project timeframe. There'll be public hearings and everything as we move forward. But this is just to get those initial um red lines out to the board and. All the board members have plenty of time to look at them, digest them. At some point in the near future, have that as a as an item for discussion. Can discuss any any concerns or anything board members would like to add, subtract. Um, and then proceed to the next steps beyond that.
When when we discuss this, uh, Dan, when 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 would you wanna discuss this?
Um, I like to get feedback from town council first on this one, because if there's anything obviously glaringly. In need of 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 context change, I'd like to at least know that before we discuss. As a board, so that's and and I kinda went through just a rough um timeline with um town council previously. And that's what kinda, that's kinda how he recommended the timeline, so I'd like to try to follow his recommendation for. Timeline for approval on that. And that's it for the planner's report.
All right, so um, as as far as the report from me, it it's not a report. Uh, I don't have anything to share outside of the following. Um, I've spent a fair amount of time of thinking about. What? We want to do. How? We could converse about it as planning board members and references we could make, like. That's general law and statutes and numbers and letters of. Not to be funny, but forty B means one thing, but some people hear it and and it's just a red flag. What I wanna share is that talking with Dan and Ross and looking at the maps. That we're gonna work on opportunity or we're gonna try and create opportunity zones, or we're gonna try and create language. That allows us to achieve certain goals. And I'm a little bit disappointed in the numbers because the goals that we might want to achieve. Might not be all that attainable. So what I'm really getting at is historically, I I have argued for. Increased density. And get the numbers up in certain parts of town, allowing for economic development through housing. Above commercial, making it mixed use. Creating units, more units, a percentage of them being affordable units, and next thing you know, over time. Perhaps the town's back is not against the wall um with state powers coming down on it. It's not really that easy. It's almost not that possible because of the percentage that needs to be affordable. In comparison to the percentage that's not affordable and the number of units keeps growing. So we were talking about that at length with the guys today, so. I just had this little bit of an epiphany that. We're gonna discuss as board members in the best interest of the town, what each of us wants, but what we see is a want. And why we're sharing it and collaborating and working amongst ourselves and then hopefully with other town members and town meeting. And maybe discussing it with friends and families to better understand what our works are and what we're trying to do. So as it makes its way into the neighborhoods, maybe more people are aligned with what we're thinking because we've taken a moment or two. All the board members to talk to twenty, thirty, forty, fifty and friends and explain what we're doing, right? So we have the want. And then through that, we're gonna strategize and we're gonna collaborate with the other boards and amongst us and so on. So we have want and then we have strategy. And I always thought strategy and collaborating was gonna lead to a certain conclusion in the best interest of the town. But when you look at the numbers and you understand affordable housing. All of a sudden, from strategy, you don't really get to your goal. You feel, at least I feel this way. I feel like we're just gonna land somewhere called reality. So we have our wants, we're gonna strategize over time to create the following opportunity to get to our goal. But I don't think our goal is attainable based on how the numbers work. We're always chasing our tail. So my seed from today's meeting for when we do get together on September twenty nine. Is that between now and then, any work we do with Dan and Ross, any visits we spend with them or amongst ourselves if we collaborate one on one. We have to have the sense of what reality is between the state's ability, the average median income. Eighty percent of that, ten percent affordable housing and a few other opportunities, and I got a feeling. That the reality, which is where we're gonna end up. Is not exactly what any of our goals were in the beginning. It's definitely not my goals. My goals were different. I was hoping mathematically to use the Route six and Fonce Corner corridors, if you would. In an increased density opportunity to try and beat the system in terms of numbers and put the town in a better position long term. But if you sit down and play with numbers, it's very, very hard to do it. And then Dan has information that he's gonna share with us and curves of what's happening, town and population over time, it becomes more obvious. So. All I'm saying is. As much as we've discussed discussed overlay, increased density, mixed use, more units. It may not be the only way that we protect rolling hillsides, green pastures and stone walls, so. Start thinking as a team, if you would individually, that we may not win by the numbers to protect the best interest of the town. It may be other policies or other opportunities, which I don't have the answer to. I just know that we have to collaborate and put our minds together to come up with them, so. I know I'm rambling. When we get together, we we can play with the numbers a little bit, but it's a cat mouse thing. Um, and Dan, uh, is it fair to share? What we see as incoming units at this point in time or is it premature?
Um, Ross, do you have that number with you?
Well, I know what the number is.
Oh, you, you got the numbers.
So.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it was, it was, it was a rough estimate and in some of its proposed, so um. Yeah, just with that caveat, some of these are still proposed projects, but it's a big number.
What is the number?
It's one thousand one hundred and thirty three units that are um proposed all through. The culmination of plans that are before the the departments now, that if they materialize, there's one thousand one hundred and thirty three units. Amongst numerous plans that will become units in town. So. One would say, oh, well, that's great news, Nick. You're gonna pick up X affordable. Yeah, and we're gonna pick up ninety percent non-affordable. So that number of units just went up in town, so we're chasing our tail again. So we may not, we may not make a long-term impact. On the town's best interest in terms of protecting hillsides, pastures and stone walls via the numbers game. And even if we played the numbers game via increased density and overlays along more commercial thoroughfares. You're still looking at a five, ten, twenty year plan before you start to visually see the impact. And think about how much activity is going to still occur outside that overlay, meaning increased units. So here we are chasing our tail again. So I don't have, I truly don't have the answer as to what I'm trying to explain. I just almost mathematically conclusively feel. That we are never gonna be able to put our hand up to the state and say, stop, no, you can't do that in our town. Because we met the quota, here's our numbers. We're always gonna be behind the eight ball.
But but uh, Chair, Mr. Chairman, that is why a lot of people oppose the forty Bs. Because of how they do the count. I think I mentioned this maybe a month ago or so. It's how they do the count because no matter how many you go, so much is taken back. So you're always like in arrears, if you can understand what I mean.
I do, that's the issue.
Yeah, that is a big issue.
It's a big issue.
Nick.
Yes.
So you don't feel quite so bad about this, we we meeting that ten percent? I can guarantee you, if you look at Westport, Fairhaven, Free Town, or Cushionet. They they probably aren't even at five percent. Dartmouth is in the area, probably has the highest percentage. Of a lot of the communities in this state. I mean, you go up towards Wellesley and Newland and they're like point oh something percent.
I I don't disagree. I actually agree with you. I mean, some of those numbers are are so, they're so small. That all you have to do is drive through and you realize they're not even, it's not possible.
Yes, exactly.
So I get it. What I, what I'm, what I'm hoping. And not enough people, and let's face it, prior to being, prior to being a planning board member, I didn't tell my son, I'm not gonna watch Monday night football. I gotta focus on the planning board meeting tonight. So but not enough people understand our concerns. The 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 differentials that are going through our minds, trying to collaborate as to what we can create as a protective mechanism. It's just, it's it's, this is a real task. I believe, Dan, are we at seven percent or plus or minus seven percent?
Sorry, just had a sip water. I believe the last number that we have as an actual rec- recorded number was seven point eight one.
Okay, so. In that number, if these one thousand one hundred and thirty three units go up, that number is not gonna get any better. It runs the risk of getting slightly worse, depending on the breakdown of the units.
I think the breakdown we did had it getting slightly worse, and that doesn't, and that doesn't include. You know, A and R lots that might come in here and there. As of right now, we talked about A D U units don't count as affordable, which doesn't make sense. To me because they were supposed to be created to help um with affordable housing stock, so. That's something that's in items for discussion amongst various um political rings.
But but did it? Do the A D Us count as now?
A D Us count as a separate housing unit, but they do not count as of today as affordable housing units.
Which is unfortunate because the way it was written up and if you read some of the mass-related definitions. It it doesn't state it, another, it doesn't say it is, but the language insinuates that it was a mechanism to contribute to affordable housing. But yet they're not counted for. It's clearly described as a mechanism to provide affordable housing. But it doesn't account for it in our numbers. So what my message tonight really is, what I'm sharing with you folks, but. I want those in the town that don't hear us and don't see us to learn that the planning board has a vested interest. In the preservation of the town. We don't have the power to stop things that are either governed by the state above and beyond the town's ability. And or things that meet the requirements. We're we're not here to develop the town, but people on each side of the fence. Need to understand that land that could be preserved, that might not be preserved, was not our wish. It's not our wish to not preserve it. It's just we don't have a defense mechanism, and I was hopeful from years ago. That the defense mechanism would be opportunity zones, increased density overlay districts, especially on commercial thoroughfares. Taking commercial stuff, making it mixed with opportunity. But it's become obvious, the way the system was created in the affordable market, it is hard. It is hard to get into a winning position. You would need a developer virtually come in and say. I worked out that this is dramatic and just for illustrative purposes. I've worked out a deal with the mall owners. I'm actually buying fifty percent of the, you know, the mall and I'm putting up twenty four hundred affordable housing units above the mall. Boom, all of a sudden we won. That's never gonna happen. But without something that drastic. We will not get to a point, at least I think our tenure, those of us that are here, I don't think we'll get to a point on this planning board. Where we can rely on the numbers and meeting the quota to defend the best interest of the town. From the perspective of preserving what we would love to preserve. So with that in mind, we need to figure out. What are the other opportunities or ways, not only to defend, but to allow, defend and preserve. But to allow for growth. I don't have the answer. Only answer I have is that. I've crossed, I've crossed the finish line and realized that playing the numbers game is not gonna get us to the promised land, and that's why I said. Nick had wants, Nick hoped to strategize, and Nick wanted to strategize to get to a goal. And I put an X in that goal box. It's no longer the goal. We're gonna get somewhere that's realistic, and we have to define that, I guess. Uh, or maybe we have to realize what the reality is and work backwards. I'm rambling because I'm hoping to collaborate and put our heads together, so. That's, that's my little report of um since the last time we were together. As to how I feel and what I think may be a an uproad battle for us, but any comments or dialogue, I would love to talk.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just add my two cents on it. I think as a board, I think the weapon we can use as we're kind of trying to come through these regulations. Is to think what options are viable to give developers ways to. Do housing that's affordable without them. Having the want to pursue the forty B process. And we're very, and I think that's where we're very limited in town for options. Um, so I think that's as a board. Ways we can look at increased density, mixed use, affordable, all those items you discussed. What kind of tools can we give the people of the town to develop their property, to allow different? Types of housing, different breakdowns on on costs and everything else that. Will will make people wanna look at other options as opposed to just saying. The only option I have, because you know, Dartmouth zoning is so strict, is I have to do a forty B. That's that's my opinion, obviously, but that's something I think. We can definitely look in those ranges to say, this is a way we can, we can shape the town. Um, with a little more say than just, let's hope there's no more forty Bs that come in. So that's just my two cents from a, from a overarching regulatory standpoint.
Dan, I I agree with you one hundred percent. We we need, we need to figure out as a town. What do we want? What do we wanna look like? Uh, a- as you said, as as an alternative. Uh, and and that's part of the the discussion with the 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 whole housing plan and and the uh. Uh, alternative styles were laid out there and and we need to take a look at. Our zoning and help promote some of the more favorable styles that get uh some some housing alternatives out there. And make it easier to uh to build. Uh, but I I I agree with you one hundred percent. We gotta decide what we want.
Much appreciated, so. Yeah, I I I think. That September twenty ninth meeting is gonna be great for all of us, and I'm sure there'll be subsequent meetings. All I ask is that we all put our minds together, knowing that. Chasing the numbers. Chasing the numbers is not going to be an imminent and great defense mechanism for us because they're not that achievable. And, and even if they were achievable categorically and mathematically, the way they work. One project, the next project can make them not sustainable. You're right back where you started. And then the state can be over your head with a forty B. So let's just plan on. Let, let's plan on that meeting. I'm sorry, someone speak.
No, let, let me just say that there is, there is a town in Rhode Island. Who's going to the state to change those rules about comprehensive permits.
They're, they're going to change, they're, they're making an effort to change.
Yeah, they're making it, they're trying to get the state to change the way they do it. Because as you realize.
Sure.
You're always in arrears. You're always in arrears. You're never going to catch up.
Right.
So whether that passes or not, I don't know, but there is a, a, a town that's trying to get it changed.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just curious. I mean, this is really thinking outside the box. It literally just came to mind. When you, when you look at. Not so much South Coast, but I'm, I'm going to use Hawthorne for a reason. When you look at them, I'll use South Coast and Hawthorne there in St. Luke's. When you look at the amount of healthcare that's happening. And you look at the university adjacent to Route Six. In Route Six, I'm just wondering eventually if a town can beat up their state. Perhaps we too can propose to do something from a different perspective. Meaning based on the amount of the healthcare that's being delivered, potentially the university. May, maybe it's an angle where we could win something over along Route Six and Fons Corner. Or an opportunity can be created. Because shy, shy of that. And I'm saddened to say that, I, it's a very defeated mindset. Shy of that. I just feel like everything that's been said up until today about forty Bs. Or the intent to preserve and the risk of losing it to a state decision. All of those are going to continue to exist regardless of our effort. And I look forward to the September twenty ninth meeting. So that we can talk as a group and hear what we each have on our mind. I just have really, really come to terms with the fact. That the numbers work against us. It's hard. So, um, I, I look forward to that meeting. Is there anybody else that wants to share anything to put on our minds for that meeting?
Um, Mr. Chairman, if I could just add one other just point of, of discussion. Um, a lot of things that we discussed today. If, if anybody is looking for any data or any statistics, if they want to. Email Ross and I, give us some time to do some research, we can try to. Have as much data for the board members as we can for that meeting. Please feel forward to. Forward that information request to Ross and I, and we'll do our best to try to get as much information as we can. Ready for that, for that meeting.
Dan, I have a question.
Yep.
Do you know of any communities, I, I know of a couple, but I don't know of any others. That have mandatory affordable housing? If you, because this was something that I tried to do. If you build five houses, we're going to give you the ability. If you have the ability to build five houses on the lot that you have. We'll give you the ability to buy, to build six because one of them will be in affordable housing. So every time these developers come before us and add another house, another house, another house, excuse me, you've met your five. Your next house has to be affordable. I, I know there are communities out there that have something like that. Maybe you could try and find them. And see how they, you know, I, I know the islands do it. I forgot how they did it, but the, the islands were doing it. So what happens is. What happens is the developer, the developer comes in and he builds four homes. Well, okay, he doesn't have to do an affordable, but if he builds five homes, he has to do it. We'll give him the ability to add one more home into that area and that house will be affordable. But if he's going to come before us and do three and two and one, he adds up to that five. He's going to have to put an affordable housing in. So it's not just one project, but it's accumulative.
We can definitely discuss it. I mean, uh.
Yeah, I know that, I know there are towns that have that kind of verbiage in their regulations. I know. The new starter home overlay zoning district regulations allow for that. Um, based on a certain amount of units. If you hit that number, then a certain percent have to be affordable, so that helps you. So you're not. Making the situation worse. So as, as you're building, you're getting a certain percent built in. Um, there's things with like, we have the special permits for the over fifty-five that can be. Language in that that says ten percent of the units have to be affordable in, in a, in a age restricted development. So at least you're not. At least, at least you're staying the status quo without the number constantly. Being a, being an uphill battle.
Right. And, um, when I was talking about this to developers. They weren't opposed to it because the structure of putting up the house is going to be the same. But what they're going to do is they're not going to put in wood flooring, they're going to put in cheap carpeting. So I mean, they're going to save money on the appliances, on the carpeting, on the light fixtures, stuff like that. Is where they, where they get to make it affordable. They don't make it affordable by using less sheetrock or less whatever.
Just the site development costs are astronomical now. So if, if you get to spread the, the site cost. Divided by six instead of, instead of divided by five, that, that changes your equations too. So. Having that, having that density bonus could be an option to help.
But is that going, I, 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 I don't want to, I don't want to take up too much of your time tonight, but is that? What you're proposing, Laurie, going to apply to all projects?
Yep, yeah.
So, so if we have, so if we have something happening. In the woods of South Dartmouth and there's five one point eight million dollar homes. The sixth home that he has to build in that project has to be a home that can be. Um, maintained and operated by somebody making eighty percent of the average median income.
Yep. The whole idea was diversity.
I, 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 I think that's, I've just my. My wife would tell me to sleep on it, but I'm just going to say it. I know, I think we need to think about that because here we are, here we are telling people, well, over the years, it's, I mean, I've only been here a few years, but. You know, contiguous surfaces, similar this, similar that, similar that. And then here we are, here we are. Going to basically dictate that they do something that. Socioeconomically is going to have to be different. So for an eighty percent of the average median income to meet it. And my point being, we're going to create such a discrepancy in perhaps a neighborhood or development. That I'm not sure that it's a benefit to the town. When, and I'll just, I'll finish with this. When we're never, as long as we're doing that for the betterment of offering affordable homes. And we're not doing it because we think we're going to meet the ten percent.
Right. I can tell you, you, look at some of the cases that the Board of Appeals has done. They've gone into neighborhoods like, like Bliscana, um, Solima area. And they've had people make homes that are worth a million dollars next to an average home. To a, that a home that's worth four hundred thousand. So we're doing a reverse. We're doing a reverse on this now. I mean, they built, they built a house next to my son that completely blocks the sun to one side of his house. And is, is a Taj Mahal and he lives in an average five hundred thousand dollar neighborhood.
Understood.
And it, it totally makes the neighborhood look stupid.
Sure.
Um, so they're doing it now. It's, but it's reverse.
Understood.
So I mean, it is something to look at and to understand, and I under, and I understand that, but we can, there's some way to do it so that it's going to be logical.
We, we also have to, we also have to think of the fact when we. If we were to do something like that. We also have to think of the fact of the market value of the houses that had been built prior to the affordable house being built. Okay, because you can't bring down prices. You can't bring down market value. So that's a tough, that's going to be a tough issue. If you're building five and six and seven hundred thousand houses, uh, dollar houses, I think, this is just my opinion. I think you're fine. When you get over a million dollars, Laurie. That's going to be tough, a million two, a million three, to put affordable housing in that group. That's going to be tough.
That's, that's exactly my concern because if you're at thirty-six hundred to four thousand square feet, one point six, one point eight. The only way to get a house at eighty percent of the average median income in terms of, you know, operating the home. Is to go back down to at best seven ninety-nine, twenty-two hundred square feet. It's, it's significantly a different structure. So we can discuss it, but this is great dialogue and it'll be a great meeting on September twenty nine.
Can I just throw out one sub note before we jump off the topic? Um, we're, the, the, just in, in what we're talking about, we're limiting ourselves to it being next door. What if they built something that was affordable somewhere else?
Exactly.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's, that's great.
That's a good idea. That's fine.
Well, that, that's, 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 that's harmless to everybody and a benefit to everyone.
Right, right.
So. Yeah.
Map the checks, everybody, you know.
Yeah.
I will also caution that it's going to be very difficult in the current climate and within our town. To check a hundred different boxes that meets everybody's wish list. There's going to have to be some difficult decisions to be made or difficult recommendations to be made.
Right.
I can't go into it thinking that if there's a hundred boxes, we're going to check every single one of them off.
You can't.
You can't.
You can never make everyone happy. You know that.
No.
There's always going to be citizens that are not happy. That's the way it is. I mean, that's like.
If we can, if we can check off fifty percent of them, we're, we're doing good.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, a hundred percent. Look, I. Th- th- this is harsh, but I'll just say it. Two acre zoning isn't for everybody. By God, you got to buy two acres before you, you can even build your house. But you know what? It's, it's a hell of a protective mechanism to know that there's only one house per two acres. Based on the fact that we're going to have difficulty playing the numbers game and based on all of our concerns in very. In a very objective way, it's currently a built-in defense mechanism. I know that it opens up a can of worms when you say two acre zoning, but. I just want to be careful that the opportunities that we come up with, we collaborate over. Innately or just in their presence, they also have mechanisms that preserves what we're trying to preserve. And it's, it's a tall task because we're asking to be, we're, we're asking to play offense with a defensive mind. But the more intense we are and, and the more in-depth we go, and the more objective it is. And the more people we tell, the more likelihood we might squeak by a town meeting. And only then have we achieved something right down the road. So. I think we're on to good stuff, even just talking tonight. And I appreciate you listening to me ramble because my wife or son probably would have told me to stop. Just being honest. So. Anything else before we move on to the magic motion? If not, we have a meeting on, we have a regular planning board meeting on September twenty second, which will be Zoom. We have the proposed September twenty ninth meeting, which will be at Town Hall that Ross will confirm with DCTV. And send us an email confirming that meeting. And then the last thing I wanted to share a few minutes ago was Dan and Ross. I took a bunch of pictures of what we looked at today, the maps, trying to capture some of the data. But I, I'll stop in on Tuesday, similarly today. And I think any visits by any planning board members, points taking off of those plans and or other of those results. We can kind of itemize them in bullet format so that at the September twenty ninth meeting. Rather than looking at the maps and looking at your notes and having kind of a fish finding expedition. Between now and then, we can create, um, just a PDF with bullets of all of the things. For instance, the available, the parcels that have available acreage, the sewer stuff we're going to talk about and a few other things. They can just become bullet points at the meeting, which I think will fast track. The beginning of the meeting. I don't know if you agree with that, but when I stop in, I can tell you what I'm thinking of. If you guys are okay with that.
Absolutely.
Sounds good.
All right. I can check out as long as someone tells me to. And by the way, it was great to see everybody and sorry for my absence.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Number eight, ladies and gentlemen.
Motion.
All right, sounds like it was Helio and was it Margaret second?
Nope, nope.
I think it was Kevin.
Okay, fair enough. We're going to sign it to him. Motion made to adjourn by Helio Rosa and seconded by Kevin Estes. Helio Rosa?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Lori Miller?
Yes.
Nick Cyclopatis, yes. Great to see everybody.
Have a good one.
September twenty second, we'll see each other. Thank you so much, guys. Bye bye.
Good night.
Hi, good night.